Good evening, I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order today being January 10th, 2017. I apologize we're a little behind. A couple of us wanted to pop in downstairs at the concert. But, the meeting tonight is being recorded by the PD School Committee's recording secretary, Leanna Harris. The matters listed on our agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to first start, if everybody could please rise for a moment of silence, and then we are going to have some special introductions for our pledge of allegiance. So, if everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Levine for an introduction of some special students we have today here from the MacArthur School.
Thank you. Welcome, parents. Thank you very much for being here and bringing your children with you. And I would, I have the pleasure of introducing the MacArthur Student Government, the offices of the MacArthur School Student Government, starting with Secretary Allison Morley. Allison is a 5th grade student at the MacArthur School. She is serving as Secretary of the Student Government, and she says that her, she is the ultimate Disney free. I just came, I just came from Orlando, folks. Yeah. It was really cool. It was literally cool, it was 25 degrees. Yeah. Allison likes to snuggle with her, with her cow, and her favorite book is Escape from Mr. Lemoncello's. She remarked that she loves writing, she participates in the annual variety show, and that she is a proud MacArthur Mustang, as a member of the basketball and track teams. She wants to be a Disney imaginer when she grows up. Welcome. Come on out here. Treasurer Troy Quinlan is a 5th grade student at the MacArthur School, and he is serving as the treasurer of the Student Government. Troy states that he is good at building things with Legos. I'm good at breaking things, so that's, that's a good partnership. Loves video games, and his favorite subject is math. He plays three sports, baseball, basketball, and football, and is a member of the MacArthur Basketball Team. Troy says that he wants to be a celebrity when he grows up, just like me. Vice President Jill McGrath is a 5th grade student at the MacArthur School, and she is serving as Vice President of the Student Government. Jill loves to run, hangs out with her friends on weekends, and likes animals more than chocolate. Are you sure? I'm sure that she still likes chocolate, however. Her favorite color is purple, and her favorite subject is reading and writing. Jill has been a member of the track team and participates in the annual variety show, and she wants to be a teacher. Welcome. I might still be Superintendent PD when you want to be a teacher, so call me. And President Jacob Conne. Jacob Conne is a 5th grade student at the MacArthur School, and he is serving as the President of the Student Government. Jacob says that he loves Halloween, the color orange, and playing video games. His favorite subject is writing, and he is a member of the basketball team. Jacob has also participated in the annual variety show for the last three years. He wants to be a dentist when he grows up. Welcome, Jacob. These fine MacArthur students will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, parents. Thank you for being here. Much appreciated. Folks, I'd just like to introduce the Principal of the MacArthur School, Ray Smoya. Great, thank you very much.
Okay, next we are going to, start of the new year, we are going to have our seat numbers drawn, and I do have the draft of the committee assignments, however, I haven't had the chance to speak to everybody, so I'm gonna wait till the next meeting for the seat, our committee assignments. However, we need to draw seats. Do we have, we have the box? We have the box.
One minute, are there other numbers?
You wanna just do it that way? This will be four, so is this number, seat number? One is, one, two, three, four, five, six. This is, we'll go with Jared.
B four, oh no, I'm sorry, that's bingo. Five, number five.
This is Tom.
Number one. Numero uno.
This is Carpenter.
What number do you want, Randy? Number four.
This is, Mr. Olympia.
Number two.
Side, Mr. Rico.
Now, Mr. Rico is from Riva. You can have any number you want, you can bump in, but... Number three.
Probably will be number six. We do have some obligations in terms of the organization of the school committee. First one would be a motion to adopt the school committee bylaws. Motion to adopt. Further motion by Mr. Rosignol for adoption, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Rico?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Are we taking care of the voting order? Election of Vice Chair for 2017? I'll go to you, Mr. Rosignol.
Mr. Chairman, as outgoing Vice Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Joseph Amico as Vice Chair for this upcoming year. I think he would do a fantastic job, so I'm...
Chairman, we'll propose the nominations for Vice Chair. Okay. Further the motion to close, all in favor. Mr. Rosignol has made a motion to name Mr. Amico as the, as this year's Vice Chairperson. Mrs. Carpenter is seconded in the motion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Rosignol?
Joseph Amico.
Mr. Olympia?
Joseph Amico.
Present.
Joseph Amico.
Mr. Harper.
Joseph Amico.
Election of Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Chairman, I'd like, as outgoing Secretary, I'd like to make a motion to nominate John Olympia as Secretary of PD School Committee.
Second. Motion to close nominations for Secretary?
Thank you, further Mr. Hockman's motion to close the nominations, all in favor. Motion was made by Mr. Amico to name Mr. Olympia as this year's Secretary to the School Committee, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote.
Mr. Rosignol?
Mr. John Olympia.
Mr. Olympia?
Present.
Mr. Amico?
Mr. John Olympia.
Mrs. Carpenter?
I've made that many enemies in a year?
I saw you behind the scenes on Hope's House.
I want to know that, Mr. Rosignol said Mr. Olympia, but he didn't say Mr. Amico.
He did not.
Appointment for subcommittee? I'll have the appointments for the subcommittees at the next meeting, please. If there's any requests, let me know, but I'll be reaching out to everybody. On that, approval of minutes? Motion to approve December 20, 2016, regular school committee meeting. Further the motion by Mr. Hockman?
Second.
For approval of the December 20th, 2016, regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, and now we will have approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'm sorry, there was a little mix-up in some of the... Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3272, dated December 8, 2016, in the amount of $102,803.05, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, further Mrs. Carpenter's motion for approval of warrant A, number 3272, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3275, dated December 8, 2016, in the amount of $66,527.19, subject to audit.
Second. Further the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant B, number 3275, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
There's a mix-up on the list, on the agenda for C and D. I think they're, D's listed...
Yes, you're right.
And the amount for C is wrong, so what I'm gonna read is correct, okay? I'd like to make a motion for warrant C, number 3299, dated January 10, 2017, in the amount of $154,910.21. Jared, was that right?
Yes.
That's the right one, right?
Yep.
Subject to audit.
Great, thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant D, excuse me, warrant C, number 3299, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Okay, the final one, this will be the correct number. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant D, number 3300, dated January 10, 2017, in the amount of $858,613.79, subject to audit.
Second. Further the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant C, number 3300, seconded by Mr. Rosignol. Roll call, excuse me, on the motion?
One second.
Yep. Thank you, and I have a roll call vote, please, for approval of warrant D.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next, we will go to continued business, we'll hold the MSBA Higgins Project update. Just wanted to add that we do have a school building committee meeting next Thursday, which will be Ju-, actually, January 19th at 4:00 PM, here at the Higgins Building School. Next Thursday, January 19th, at the Higgins Building School. I did want to mention places to see Mr. Charis Tebow, he misses us, he's here at the school committee. Thank you for coming, Mr. Charis. We have an open seat here, probably, are you outside? Continued business, I actually, let's get this off. The kids only before and after school program, any update on?
No update, except all things are going, everything's going well, and we're still looking at the Burke Schools possibility.
And continued business, as the superintendent search, I have no update beyond the fact that the application period is ongoing, and I know applications are coming in. Mr. Rosignol?
I know where we left off last time, there was some discussion of whether we were going to have an advisory committee or a subcommittee to review resumes. I didn't know if that was something that the committee was still leaning towards. My, my apprehension with only going through MASC is they do not conduct interviews, and candidates, at least in my experience, can look fantastic on paper, but without the interview process, it can be difficult to narrow down the right for the best candidate, in my opinion. So, I didn't know how we thought moving forward, we got a small group as a subcommittee of the school committee for interview process, so I just have a question again.
Any thoughts, any others? Mrs. Carpenter?
Through the chair, Mr. Rosignol, what do you envision in regards to the makeup of that?
Through the chair, my... What I would envision is a small group of six individuals, maybe two from the school committee, two community members, two parents, sitting down with MASC, with all of the resumes that come into play, reviewing them, coming up with the criteria that we're looking for, hashing those resumes out, coming down with, let's say, out of the 2,000 that we get, narrowing that down to the top 10, interviewing those top 10, and then moving the top 3 forward to the school committee. We as a board, by law, cannot review every candidate without making it open to the public, but the review board can, and they can go through an interview process where we cannot as a board. So, my, my fear would be twofold, is without the interview process, somebody that looks great on paper that we get as the top few candidates may not be what we're ideally looking for, without that interview process in between. So, at least that's where my mind kinda went. I know last time you and I ran the superintendent search, it was 16 people, it was difficult to do. We also had focus groups, we also had surveys, we also did a number of outreach endeavors to make sure we have everybody's input, as far as what they were looking for for the best candidate. I still have a lot of that material, still. I think we still should have a focus group and survey the public of what they're looking for, but I, I think a small group to interview candidates would be ideal with MASC to kinda help guide us in our decision-making.
Through the chair, I understand where you're coming from. My initial thought is it kind of circumvents the whole reason why we hired MASC. I was very hopeful and optimistic in the three or four candidates that they would bring forward to us to interview. Kind of on the fence right now, I'm not sure if somebody adds anything to that, but I'm pretty happy with the process that I think we have moving forward. I don't know, I'm not...
If I may just address that, though, and I was too. I think, as I think somebody put it when we were talking about this earlier, is, you know, you want a CEO of a company, you want to hire a headhunter, so you find the best candidate. But that entails interviews, and MASC said point blank that they don't do interviews. So, they would only be going off pieces of paper. In my experience last time around, there were a lot of candidates that looked fantastic on paper, and you got them into a room, and you questioned them, and sometimes the smallest question, and you see them flustered, and you see their body language, and you see their mannerisms, and you see that they wouldn't be a good fit. So, that's why I'm leaning towards having a small group to conduct the interviews, is only because MASC said they do not do interviews. They said they'll help us and hold our hand through this entire process, which I think will be beneficial to all of us, but without that interview piece, I think, I think that would be a difficult job for us to manage without that.
I understand, through the chair. My, my thought still at this point is, it's what they do. I hold a lot of hope out that they're gonna move forward the best, which we have to decide as a board, how many do we want to move forward to us for the public interview, that they know most of the players that apply, that they can see them in some type of public setting where, you know, they're in the field somewhere that they can hear them or know them already. I'm not convinced just as of yet, I, right now I'm not in favor of it, I don't know if we're fitting to anybody else. I'm, I'm very happy with the process that we have right now, but I don't know, it could be so.
Thank you. Mr. Amico?
Thank you. Through the chair of the committee, so where we're at right now is we have a, either have a small group or subcommittee versus the school committee as a whole here choosing and interviewing candidates. My only concern about having a small group or a subcommittee doing it is, at that point, those resumes are not made public, if I'm correct. And at that point, once they, if they sift out, say, that subcommittee or small group sifts out five out of 10 resumes, and brings us five resumes at that point, and three out of those five people now know it's gonna be public and decide to pull out and not be part of the process, now we only have two, and that could be troublesome if we're gonna look for the, for our next superintendent, versus if the school committee as a whole looks at 10 resumes, can we take those 10 resumes? At that point, we know whether or not those people, or those candidates, want to pursue this, because at that point they have to pull out, because those resumes are now gonna be public in an open session.
Whatever we get as a committee as a whole, has to be public.
Well, and that's my, and that's my point. At that point, they know that we are conducting a search, excuse me, through the chair of the committee.
Yeah.
So, at that point, they, at that point, they could have pulled out.
So, your, so your point is they've made it this far, we know the final three or the final four we're getting are gonna stay.
Exactly, exactly, and we have a large pool, and I think that's what we, that's what I would like, is a large pool to draw from, versus... Okay.
I'll go back to Mr. Rosignol.
On those points, just a couple of things. If they're gonna jump because they were the final three, why wouldn't they jump if they were the final five? So, that's my first question, I'll just leave that hanging there for just one second. We can have that subcommittee submit us as many as we want, that's our prerogative. So, if we wanted to have them interview 12 candidates and bring us six, that would be fine. Just know that the more number that is coming to this board, the less likely people will be willing to have their name out there. They want, at least in my experience, and I'll even have to ask Don and Buckle if he's in it, in his experience, and I know that puts you in an interesting situation, but if you're one of eight, 10, you have a one in eight chance of being hired. If you're one of three, you have 33% chance of getting hired. To me, you'd be less likely to, to not move forward with a fewer number than you would with a greater number. Just one second.
I'll go back to Mr. Amico.
Through the chair of the committee, my only concern with that is, in the small group or subcommittee process, the candidate still has a way out, because at that point the resume is not made public. If they know that we are looking at resumes and bringing, bringing them in, at that point they have to stay, and I think that's important when you might have a couple of, you know, a couple of candidates who might look at different options. I notice Walden is out there as well, another urban district, you know, 10 miles down the road, so for me, at this point, I'd like to stay with, the school committee made the decision. Again, I'm on the fence, but I'm leaning towards that, just because of that reason. I want as many candidates as possible, so we can make that decision, and I think having the school committee make that decision, this is a better chance at that, if that makes sense.
I'm gonna go real quickly, Mr. Rosignol, since he was at the point, but then I want to go back to you.
Once, whether MASC does it, and we don't have a, a subcommittee, or, either MASC or a subcommittee, either way, once we have knowledge that we have their resume, so do they, so they can pull out then. So, they can pull out before we even see it, just to, just for clarification.
On that specific point, Mr. Rosignol?
On that specific point, thank you, through the chair, but maybe their employer does not, because it's not public, and that's, and that happens. Candidates pull up because maybe there's a hometown, hometown offer on the table from where they may be, if they're, if, say, they're an assistant super at that point. So, that's probably the only thing, is public versus non-public, and in the first group setting, sub-group or subcommittee, it's not made public, but when it comes to us, it is, so that, that might be, there might be a difference there.
Mr. Rosignol?
Through the chair, my opinion on this is, if I was a candidate, and I was, say, one of 10 or 12, then I would be more inclined maybe to pull out if I didn't, you know, you know, have a good feeling, but maybe we expand the public interview process, instead of three candidates, maybe the top five, because at the end of the day, the people that are gonna pull out, they're gonna pull out and matter a lot, that's how I feel, and maybe we don't hold ourselves to three, maybe we do five, and therefore we have a little bit more leeway, a little bit more flexibility. And also too, on a side note, I get a little nervous with, let's just say we're interviewing 10 or 12 people in a subcommittee, you have five or six schedules, people's schedules to all coincide at the same time, time becomes, you know, of the essence, so the scheduling issues that I'm concerned with, so I'm thinking that maybe we, if we were leaning towards maybe three or four candidates coming before us, that we, you know, maybe expand it, you know, to one or two candidates, and just not have the subcommittee, and I think that might be the more efficient way to go.
So, I think really that it comes down, and Mr. Amico kinda set it up well, that there's two choices to make here. One is that we just continue the path where MASC is going to be recommending three, four, or five, and we determine how many we want to have come to us. The second option, Mr. Rosignol spoke about, was to ask for 10, put together a committee to do an interview of the 10, and then make final recommendations to the school committee to interview, and again, that can be determined as to the number, three, four, or five. So, MASC can do it either way. When I spoke to Mr. Kuchar a short time ago, he said that they'd be willing to do it either way we want, and whatever number they would ask us for, or we would ask them for, they would be ready to prepare, to provide that to us. So, it's really just up to us. We don't have to make the decision tonight, but I think we have to make it at least by the next meeting, as to what the plan is going to be. I believe the application period is closing February 18th, so I think by the next meeting in January, two weeks from tonight, we should have a decision made as to what the requests are to the MASC as to how we're gonna move forward with the process, as well as some of the things we want the MASC to focus on, as to what type of candidate we'd be inclined to have, and that time we can get into specific experience or other qualifications or characters, except we...
we may want as a committee, so they can factor that into their determinations.
Mr. Rosen?
On that last point, will we be having a community meeting to see what the public wants in their next superintendent, and will we be sending out a survey? Because we need to have both of those done before we start this process, before we accept resumes, before we go through them. So, I leave that up to the committee as well. Most times when you're, when you're having a superintendent search, you can have a focus group, you can have a meeting of the community as a whole looking for what they're looking into for a candidate or for a superintendent, and you can also send out a survey, which is things you've done in the past.
Well, those are both good points, I think we have to make decisions on that pretty quickly as well. I think we could do it either way, or we could do both. We could have a focus group set up for one evening, invite the parents, the public to come and give their opinion, or we could do a survey, as I said, or we could do both.
Mrs. Copeland?
Yeah, to that point, I was just thinking about a few of the surveys that we had put together before, and now we would also have the option of putting them online, to invite people to come to our website and submit their, you know, maybe a checkbox and with a little comment section, or invite them to a school committee meeting during public participation upcoming. But I will say to Mr. Lepio's point, you know, time is of the essence, and if you're talking about putting a committee together, doing some more interviews, that is gonna drag it out. So, I really did like the idea of maybe expanding the number of candidates from three to five or anywhere, you know, four. I think that would probably be the better way to go. But I kind of look and see if I still have the old surveys. But, yeah, because I think mine are a few of those, so I might not be relevant. Would you put it online?
Yeah, I think that's great. And Mr. Rosen, to your point, I think, I think we need to do that, we need to do that. At least a survey, and I even think probably beneficial to us when we make the final request to the MASC as to the qualifications, characteristics, the personal attributes that we want highlighted when they go through the process. I think we should, we see something, but have maybe a night, you know, at a high school or here at Higgins, where you invite the public over a couple of hours, or you can sit home, whatever is most convenient. And then invite, invite everybody to come, do the survey, because, you know, sometimes it's difficult to make it on a certain evening, at least have the survey as well. You can provide that in the backpacks, but also put it online, so that we can try to get as wide a variety of responses as we can. So, I, it's okay with the committee, superintendent and I in the office can set up, put together some dates, and then Mr. Rosen and Mrs. Copeland can maybe find out about those surveys if you still have those, and we can put that together as well.
I also have questions from the focus group we had last session.
So, I'm thinking if February eighteenth is the close, I think we want to try, I think we have to make the final decision as to whether we're going to just request the MASC provide us with three to five candidates, or if we want to put together a small subcommittee to interview a large pool of candidates, ten or so, and then make recommendations in the school committee to final interviews. I think we have to make that decision after January twenty-sixth meeting. And I think shortly thereafter, maybe the last week in January or the first week in February, we set up a, an evening where we invite the public, parents, people to come and give their recommendations and their thoughts and their opinions as to the qualities we want for our superintendent. Is that fair?
Very good. Thank you, that was good. Public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? Microphone is open. Please, sit down.
May I just ask, I heard all about this with the superintendent search, but would there be any participation as far as administrators and teaching staff and other staff for the superintendent search? Can we participate in the survey? That's just, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, Dr. Nappi, how are you doing?
Can we do that as part of it? We don't have to be specialized, but part of the survey. I think that would be really instrumental, as the administrators are leader.
Yep.
And we would definitely have an input.
No, absolutely, one hundred percent agree.
Thank you. That's not why I'm here, but.
Well, you used up your time, though.
Oh, no. I'll come back later.
Jared Cameron, Brenda Wolf are not coming this evening, I know they had some specific answers that they were gonna give to specific, answer that they were gonna give to specific questions that Mrs. Dunn had asked for, so we're gonna hold that to a later meeting if Mrs. Dunn's present. I think it's the first meeting she's missed in ten years, I don't know. So...
Superintendent's report, Dr. Levine?
Yeah, thank you very much. For discussion only, I would ask for any last minute input, if you have any, from the draft of the calendar that I sent out and direction to me, so that my next step will be to meet with the union and discuss any concerns that they might have, and then get a recommendation back to you, final adoption. So, with that, I would ask through the chair for any last minute input regarding the draft of the calendar. Mrs. Copeland?
Thank you, through the chair, Dr. Levine. You still have to order make the current teacher conferences, so the elementary dates will be in there?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll still be able to look at it?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're planning on meeting the union and then coming back to us?
Through the chair, I'll meet with the union in the next week or two. The union president is aware that we're discussing at the table tonight, and he'll be coming in in the next week or so.
Okay, so we could put it on the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, comments? Dr. Levine?
Excuse me, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I am supporting a waiver request for the, of the fees attached to the proposed craft fair for our playground. And with this request, I would also ask that we waive as a school department, any fees attached to custodial fees, and make that part of our contribution to this effort.
Motion to follow the recommendation of superintendent and request honorable waiver?
Second. Heard the motion by Mrs. Copeland, or seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm eternally grateful. You're doing great. We're up to twenty-five thousand. Do you have, I'm sorry. Next year are they gonna start? No, we're gonna build a new one.
A people.
I'm a visionary. That's okay. Yeah, we're very excited.
If I may, through the chair, just take a second to recognize Dr. Nappi's efforts, not only regarding her taking over the South School for a year and really helping us out there, but her professional understanding of what it takes to get an effort like this, not only off the ground, but continued with a great deal of steam and enthusiasm. So, thank you, Dr. Nappi, for everything that you do, most of which goes quietly unnoticed, but we know and we thank you.
You're welcome, but I'll tell you what, I have a great support of South. The South School is a treasure, and makes me happy to come back to such a wonderful environment.
And of course, you love your superintendent.
I do.
Yeah, thank you.
He pays me, so. I have to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Nappi.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you all, I really appreciate it.
And just approval for the overnight request for field trip, track and field to Dr. College for our tracking.
Motion to follow the recommendation of superintendent.
Motion made by Mr. Rosen, seconded by Mr. Lepio, on the table.
And that is it, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. It should've already happened.
Yeah, it was late coming, yeah. I'm glad you approved it, though.
Next item, written communications. We do have one written communication. This was our letter to Stacy Burnson on behalf of the committee's request to be included in the submittal to Mass Housing regarding the potential Oak Street project. Just to give an update, the packet was submitted, it was a very lengthy packet. The school committee's letter was part of that submittal, and we anticipate we'll be hearing in the month of six weeks. That's the decision for Mass Housing, so as soon as I hear, I will let all of you know. Subcommittee reports, our education subcommittee, Mr. Hockman, you can report it. Finance, Mrs. Copeland?
Thank you. On finance committee met this evening, and I have the AV tech facilities manager position that we need to approve, and I'm gonna pass around the job description.
What's the...
So, this is a position that I think Dr. Levine can explain, and the finance subcommittee has reviewed it and is in favor of it, and we just need a vote over the full committee, so once you've had a moment to review it, if you have any questions, you can throw some to Dr. Levine.
This is for the Higgins Middle School to run the AV department.
My, my only question was in terms of, gosh, city facilities manager, who's involved in this? I'm sure you're not gonna have any issue with the, the document, but in terms of the hiring, you might need someone that you should have part of the process. City facilities, state, and then, what pilot? Higgins knows for itself, I just think somebody that we want as part of that process.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem. I think we've kind of categorized it along with the, I'm talking to me, involving the techy voids in that same area. I think Dr. Levine had wanted it sooner rather than later because there's some people waiting to rent facilities.
Oh, yeah, I believe it, I hear. But just the title, you know, AV tech facilities manager, I just kind of, you know, I want, there should be some interaction with the facilities manager in the city.
If I may, through the chair, this is a non-union position, as are all the technology positions under Chris Mitchell, Mr. Paul under Chris, and be a school department hire, would answer directly to Chris Mitchell and the, you know, school principal. Be more than happy to include the facilities manager of the city in any interviews. This is a part-time job, it's not full-time, and will be paid hourly. So, it's a little bit different than, I understand exactly why you're saying what you're saying, because it has the term facilities manager. What we're really looking at is the person who's gonna manage the sound, lighting, and equipment in the auditorium more than anything else that will be built here for the, for the school. So, having Tim as part of the team, he's been part of the team in many interviews, is not a problem.
No, I defer, I defer to the school. To be honest, I don't like the name, I don't like the name of the position. It's gonna be a part-time position, I don't think we should be naming it facilities manager, having that attached to it, but in terms of what the intent is and what the job responsibilities are gonna be, I'm perfectly fine with that, it makes total sense to me. I just don't, I don't like the name.
I have the same problem in the subcommittee, I want the name of the herbal bean disc football operator.
Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, yeah, I agree with the mayor on this one, it does seem like a little heavy on a title for a part-time position, and the only other thing I have is, will this person also have an assistant in the case of, if we're renting out a facility hypothetically to an elementary school for a big event, and this manager is not available to show up at they, whether they're sick or something happens, will we have someone else that can run the high-tech equipment out there, or will they be able to train someone as well during the short period of time?
Through the mayor. That's a very good question, and actually, it was branding in through subcommittee that recommended that this be a two-person job, and this will be, the intention is to hire two people under the same job description, so that they can interchange, exactly for that reason, Mr. Miko. So, yes, the answer is yes. We'll be hiring two people on an hourly rate to fill this job, so they can work together, and also, somebody who may not be available on a Tuesday night might be available on a Thursday night, and they have to interact with each other.
Right, thank you. So, will they be paid, I'm sorry, will they be paid hourly? Is that the intention here?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosen?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, technical advisors are kind of sufficient for a job title as a facilities manager, but how will this person be paid, out of what line item, out of what account? Where is the money coming from for a brand-new position in the middle of the school year?
I take that out of the herbal bean excess fund.
Yeah, pocket. All right, I'm up. Sign me up.
Through the mayor, please. We have a facilities rental budget, there's money in that rental budget that we could look at, there are also a number of other line items that we may be able to service through this, but the people who are paying for the facility will generally pay thirty dollars an hour, we're recommending thirty dollars an hour. They, with the exception of our own people, and we're guided by your previous policy that's in the policy book, any outside group will pay the thirty dollars an hour, it will not come from us, it will come from them.
So, through the chair, how are we doing financially right now while we're looking at hiring a position in the middle of the school?
Yeah, we're not doing well. I've kept the school committee apprised of that we're in deficit in a number of areas, the mayor knows that, but right now I can't give you a report that says how much and in what areas, because Jared is still working through those numbers. We talk every day, and Jared, feel free to jump in if you'd like, but we're, we're in deficit. We were in deficit this time last year, and we were able to work out, winding up in the black, and I think that I, we, at each meeting, we tell you that, that, you know, we're working through it. I didn't know whether we would be five hundred thousand dollars to the good or five hundred thousand dollars to the bad. We're pretty much in the same position this year.
So, through the chair, but now you're asking to add on staff that you don't even know how many hours they're really gonna work from now until the end of the school year?
Through the chair, we don't, and we're hiring on, on the basis of need. If you want your facility up and running, and rentals to be coming in, we need these positions. The equipment is too expensive and too sensitive to allow, and you know that.
I agree with that entirely.
To allow people to be able to use it without being trained, we need experts to be able to run it. So, I think that we're in a, in a time period with this particular auditorium, that, we're in a testing period, we don't know, we probably won't know for six months to a year, as to how much this is gonna be used, what kind of a calling there is for these folks to work, and how many hours, and what it's gonna cost us. But much of this will be defrayed by the people who are renting it in the first place, because they're gonna pay that, that price.
Except for school.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And you... I can say right now, at City Hall, we put together a, an AV team, because we're gonna be doing some upgrades to City Hall auditorium, upgrades to our sound system, and we put together a team that's overseeing, that Tim Healy is overseeing now, the facilities This has to be done, because we need, you know, we want our residents, we want our organization to utilize, I think it's middle school, gymnasium, and auditorium, beautiful place, and, you know, we want it to be utilized, you know, I was at the concert last night for the sixth grade, and it was just a terrific evening, and the light was being operated by one of the teachers, and you can't quite have that when you're a technician of some sort. I am a little uncomfortable with the name, you know, I think we can come up with AV technician, specialist, advisor, something along those lines, rather than facilities managers, because we already have a facilities manager, I'm still uncomfortable with that language, and then not having Mr. Healy involved. I do think that he should be somewhat involved in reporting to principal and Mr. Healy, I want him involved in some capacity, seeing what's gonna take place. want him involved in some capacity, seeing what's going to take place, and so we can have some interaction with the people that we hire. You know, I do think that's important. Those are my thoughts and recommendations. Everything else is terrific, and I know we need to move on this because I get calls quite frequently, people want to use it. I do think there's general income that we can generate from the use of the auditorium that could offset some of the costs over the need to pay for the people that we hire. And I do want to incorporate on that, those would be my thoughts.
Through the chair, just the, the changing of the name is not a problem, we have other titles that we can use. One of the things we can't use is anything that would put it into a union contract. There are certain titles that automatically go into union contracts. So I can come up with the idea of specialist, technician specialist, we already have that with, with some of the techy boys that, that are already on staff, so we can certainly fill that group.
We're talking a couple hours a week, you know, a couple nights a week, and maybe that they would be used, these positions.
Through the chair, as far as the nights are concerned, that would be driven by the amount of requests that we approve to use the auditorium for a whole variety of things. I, I think that we're going to get community groups that request to use the auditorium, I think we're going to get dance recital people that request to use the auditorium, and the direction of the school committee is that one of these people will be on-site for every event. That's, that's first of all. Second of all, these, these folks, assuming that we hire, let's say, somebody internally who's already working at the Higgins, they'll be doing a lot of after-school professional development for people who internally want to be able to use the, for our own musical, for our own plays, that want to use the equipment. So I think it might be a little bit more than, than just a few hours. I'm not sure it'll be, you know, a huge number of hours every week, it will fluctuate.
But it won't be, it won't be over 19 hours a week. I mean, that's when it would trigger union involvement.
Yeah, no, we won't, we would not allow that. But once again, if we hired somebody who's already on staff, it wouldn't trigger union involvement, Mr. Mayor, it would trigger benefits. Anything over, anything over 19 hours a week would trigger benefits.
Well, yeah, and that's when the union gets involved. It's, yeah, it's the same thing, the union would get involved, and that's when it triggered benefits. So I, I mean, I couldn't imagine a scenario where somebody we would be hiring would work anywhere near 19 hours a week.
Unlikely, and even during the busiest of times, if we have two people doing it, we can make sure that that switches on.
Mr. Miko?
I think my, my question is answered, thank you. So I'm all, I'm all in favor of this, if we can just adjust the name, and then I would like to have Tim Healy as reports to principal slash designate, I think that's the fifth line from the bottom. I do think we should have Tim Healy involved in the initial training, and I just feel like Tim needs to know what's taking place, and has a relationship with the people that we bring up. If we can make those adjustments, I think this would be ready to go.
Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, just through you to the superintendent, if I may. Dr. Levine, if you're imagining this to be an administrative-level position in your direction for hiring and termination and things along those lines?
Through the chair, it's a school department job, so all the hiring, the final say-on of hiring would be the principal and the superintendent. That's by law.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I envision, I thought, and that's where, I'm a little, well, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you in principle with Mr. Healy should be involved in terms of some reporting to purposes, but I got the impression that the reporting to provision within this description was for hiring and finding, and I could be wrong about that. I don't think Mr. Healy, well, he does a wonderful job, and he's an important member of our team, doesn't impact the principal and the superintendent's discretion in terms of those.
No, I, I don't envision him being involved in hiring and firing, I just think he needs to know what's taking place.
Okay.
I think we're on the same page.
Good, thank you.
Any other?
Just, just to let the, you know, in conjunction with this, we did discuss that we will be working on tiers, and similar to the turf field, start setting up some different fee structures. And that would be taking place at the next finance meeting to essentially find some of this position.
Great, that makes perfect sense.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to, again, for clarification, the direction in the subcommittee was for me to be able to work under the present fee structure that we have in place so we can get started on the rentals, and then once the language changes in subcommittee and the school committee approves it, we'll operate on the new fee structure.
So you needed a motion?
We have a motion, I second it.
Do they motion?
I don't think so.
No, I just said we approved it. So...
So a motion to approve the position with recommended changes?
With the recommended changes of the title of the...
Great.
And add some...
Yeah, I guess. Second. Motion made by Mrs. Caffetter, seconded by Mr. Huckman. Roll call, both please.
Mr. Rosno?
Yes.
Mr. Albiol?
Yes.
Mrs. Caffetter?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another thing to report on.
Well, this went so swimmingly.
I know, the next one's going to be great. So before you, there was handed out by Mr. Stanton, the law that he has, it wasn't in your package, so we do need a motion to approve.
Received.
Received. It's in regards to the way that we approve and receive, not necessarily receive, but approve the warrants, and it needs to be done, done in a more timely manner. So Jared did approach me about a new process because he needs to get them done a little bit more efficiently. This would actually, he's looking for approval of it not during our school committee meeting, but he would still have it before you at a meeting. And the suggestion would be that he sends it out to the three finance committee members for approval so that he can get the bills paid in a timely manner. We would still approve them after the fact at a full meeting. And, Mr. Mayor, it's okay if Mr. Stanton wants to explain it better than I because I just found out about it tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Caffetter. Mr. Stanton, do you want to please further explain which?
Yes, through the chair, thank you. So when I passed out on August 9th, a bill entitled, "Enact and Organize Municipal Finance in Government," to promote smarter, more efficient government at both the state and local levels, to update the obsolete laws. Basically, what this would do is it would give us greater flexibility, because right now, before the August 9th of all was, the school committee had to approve all checks and everything before that they were released. What this will allow us to do is it will allow the school committee to appoint up to one or up to three people or whatever to review the warrants before the full school committee meeting, then bring, so I would send an email out with the warrant, they would review the warrant, they would answer, I would answer any questions that they had, and then they would approve in lieu of signature, approved email, I would let City Hall know to release the checks. At that school committee meeting, you would approve the full warrants, and you can still ask any questions that you do have, but it would be sent by email. But what this would do is it would speed up, it would speed up the process, it would allow me to get a better handle on the budget, it would allow us to free up all the time that we're fielding phone calls for vendors looking for checks. I did speak to my counterpart over at City Hall, so he knows what it is.
Any questions for Mr. Stan, Mr. Rosno?
Thank you. I fall in, in favor of anything that's going to speed up the process of payment, because I know right now we tend to have a difficult time through that system. It tends to the bottom, and it is difficult. So, so I'm definitely in favor of speeding up the process. My one question is, is if three committee members approve and goes off for payment, but the board as a whole has an issue with one specific line item or a specific section, how do we then, in turn, recoup what we are not going to pass as a board?
Well, a check could be voiding, we could avoid a check. If whoever is in charge of looking at all of his big-ticket items, we can actually hold those. It's, it's honestly, it's really releasing the smaller checks, getting the small ones out, the suppliers and everything who are constantly in relationship with ordering and we just try to improve that relationship and streamline.
Any further questions, Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to sustain. So, under this proposal, we're going to have the finance subcommittee inter, inter meeting, I guess, for warrants, would there be, would the finance committee have line item how, you know, to not, to, to approve the warrant minus one, two, three, or X number of line item because we have some reservations, or the finance subcommittee has some reservations about that and wants a matter discussed before the whole school committee, would that be what you would envision?
I would envision that, I'm not exactly sure how that would work because technically the warrant, the full warrant would have to be approved, so I think if there was some questions by those members, then we would go ahead and table that warrant.
So I, I guess, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, with that, I mean, so long as the, if there were some issues within a particular warrant, and it doesn't happen that often, but frequently there's an issue within a warrant, and your understanding that the finance subcommittee then has an issue, we could reserve and wait for the next scheduled full school committee meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albiol.
Through the chair, Mr. Stan, so couldn't the whole school committee as a, as a whole approve this at a time? So this way, everybody's maybe more comfortable with it, and this way, there's not, just really cuts down any confusion or anything like that, so I would be comfortable with all of us, would you want, and, I don't know, anyone else have any thoughts?
One of the, one of the things, so I did have experience with this in my last district, I brought that there, being elected to have the three, we just have to be president of the open meeting law. So I, what I would do, probably was going to do that either way with the three, I would always blind see, see each member with the warrant, so if there's any questions, they send it right back.
Okay.
Through the chair. I'm not sure that electronically, a whole committee can make that decision.
No?
I think that would be a violation of the open meeting law.
Yeah, that's, I don't need to correct you. Mrs. Caffetter?
So I'm going to make a motion to follow a recommendation at the Higgins Middle School for the warrant weekly?
As I, as needed. As needed. I was thinking the weeks that we do not have a school committee meeting or vacation meetings.
It's always say as needed. Two members of the finance committee for approval, and it would still come before the full committee as regular advocates. That's the one.
Motion by Mrs. Caffetter.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rosno for discussion. Mr. Huckman?
I just don't want the, for approval. I want for review and, and action or something. I don't want it for...
But it essentially is looking for...
But if it's disapproval, I want us to have that opportunity.
So would you not?
Just action.
For action, right, instead of approval for action?
Yeah.
That's fine, no offense, that's fine.
That makes sense. Motion made, seconded. Everybody okay? Roll call, both please.
Mr. Rosno?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm done.
Through the chair, if I may. I would just like to very quickly thank Jared, Stan, and Charlie Sharet for streamlining and bringing us into the 21st century in both human resources and business management. Dave Keniston did a wonderful job, that's not a criticism of Dave, it just didn't carry it up here. We are now putting everything on, on paper and in computer form so that by the end of this year, it will pretty much make sense to everybody as to what our budget is, where our line items lay, and where we're to the good and where we're not. Jared's worked countless number of hours in order to streamline that process for us. Charlie is doing the same thing in human resources. We are developing a new software system for human resources which will save us an awful lot of time and aggravation. We'll also be able to operate more quickly, once again, for the public. So I think we're in the service business, and I think our services will be done.
Thank you. School safety, Mrs. Caffetter?
Number two.
Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next athletic meeting will be on the 17th at PBB High School at 6 o'clock, with discussion being evaluation process for coaches as well as current intake of G P receipts. I also have the opportunity to attend a community advisory board for the high school student health center. First thing I'm going to say is the money's well spent as far as adding a, added behavioral health. Staff down there, they're doing amazing work. Their referrals went up double than what they was this time last year. And I mean that in a good way. They're servicing kids, keeping them in school, and providing ancillary health for them. So they're doing a great work down there. Other topics that we discussed is the use of youth advisory council, that's growing strongly down there. What, what that is, is basically they have students from the high school participate in getting the entire high school to feel better about themselves in one way, shape, or form, and get them to really kind of boost school spirit as well as your own kind of morale. And it's working so well, they've actually been asked to go to Salem and establish a youth council there. So there's a group of them, they're actually going to Salem for their health center and trying to get that up and running over there. So that just shows you, the vision that we had for our kids is now kind of being simulated in another, so that's, that's pretty impressive. We talked about medical visits as well as behavioral health visits. Of course, we talked about funding because without sustainability, you don't have a health center. So that's something that us as community advisory board is going to always be discussing, how we can look for grants, how we can continue to keep the grants that we have, and that will be ongoing. And our next meeting is going to be in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosno. Quality and standards, we'll hold that, as well as the city council advisory board liaisons, nothing new to report on building backgrounds. New business, we have a couple of items. The first one is...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reporting quality and standards.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize, that's right. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Miko, could you please report it here?
Stan is not here this evening, so I'll be pinching it. We do have a meeting on Monday, January 23rd, the quality and standards here at the Higgins at 6 o'clock, and we'll be discussing volunteer confidentiality policies.
Sorry about that, Stan.
I'll be reporting on the liaison to city council advisory board.
Sorry about that.
Not how much, oh, it is. The next half, even, will be January 23rd, 7 p.m. at the Higgins. We're going to be meeting with Sharon Cameron of Public Health and Brenda Wolf, who is the head of school nurses. The topics that will be covered is coverage of the school, coordination with the high school health clinic, E P venues, and the health services and other updates. So it's January 23rd, 7 p.m. at the Higgins.
Good, thank you, Paul. New business, we do have two items. The first one is venue for school committee meetings. Mr. Rosno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know when we left the Kylie building, we were really anticipating having our meetings here, and the anticipation was for a live feed like it has been both at the Kylie and at City Hall. Where Comcast is not...
Cooperating.
Cooperating, that's a good word, and, and has not wired this building the way we anticipated. I would recommend, until they fix the issues here, I think we should move our meetings to City Hall so that we can have that live feed that people look forward to. You know, it's, I, I think the important thing is, is that we meet in public, but the more accessibility we have, I think... we have, I think, the better. And I'll be honest with you, I hold us right now, I guarantee not one of us will know when this is going to be due. Because I know I, and I don't think that that does the community service. So I'd like to make a motion that we, for now, we move our meetings from here to City Hall for all of our current school committee dates until this place can have the Wi-Fi capability that we expected. Certainly.
We've run the motion by Mr. Rosenoff, seconded by Mr. Miko. On the motion, Mrs. Carpenter?
I don't have a problem with that. My only issue is that we subcommittee, a lot of them are usually right before a school committee.
What, what would you be able to use over there?
Some place the community would like my office.
Really?
As a meeting station.
We can, okay.
Mr. Huckman?
Yeah, to that point, because that's the only time I think I was, I fully supported Mr. Rosenoff. Does it happen to rehabilitated yet or February kid from the basement?
It will be completed the first week of February. It's all done.
So this pays?
Yeah.
You mean, just want to make sure that we can conduct our businesses.
The, the first week of February, the furniture's being delivered out. All the work is done, it's waiting for the furniture to be delivered. So that'll be completed. But my room, my office is available. I think Mr. Rosenoff makes a great point. I can tell you that I'm meeting Friday with representatives from Comcast, and hopefully I can have some updates for the committee at that, after that meeting. All right. Motion on the floor. Seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rosenoff?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenoff. Second item under new business, Mr. Lippiyo, safety locks in classrooms. I'll turn over to you.
I'd like to cast out the handout. I'll show you soon.
Just real briefly, I'd like to make the motion that maybe the school safety subcommittee review this. A few parents reached out to me, Carroll and Brown School, and they caught one of this safety lock system that some districts have implemented. It's called a Barracuda. And basically, it's a specialized lock that fits on the arm of a door, it could go across a door or underneath a door. And basically, in an emergency situation, it could stop an intruder from going into a classroom. And just a, I think on, on the surface, it's a great idea. I don't know the cost. Certainly, I'd like maybe Mr. Stanton to take a look at that. But just a couple of concerns I just had off the bat was, first of all, I think we'd probably need police and fire input on this. And second of all, if that was okay with, you know, police and fire, they're on board with this type of lock, you know, during lockdown procedures, we would restore this type of device because my fear, and I was thinking about this, is if a student, especially in the middle school or high school level, had access to this lock, they'd take it and go into another, you know, room that's not occupied and just so, but certainly things that, you know, need to be discussed, and I just think it's worth just taking a look at. And I told the parents that I would recommend that the safety subcommittee would take a look at it.
Second, Mr. Miko. Heard the motion by Mr. Lippiyo, seconded by Mr. Huckman. Any further comments? I think it's a good topic to bring forward to committee and subcommittee.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, just for clarification, you're putting this just into subcommittee.
Yeah, I think it should be reviewed.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
We'll put it into school committee. Items for new agenda, next agenda, I did have a couple things I wanted to inform the committee of. We do have dates coming up for statement of interest for the accelerated repair program. Summits would have to be made by Friday, February 17th, 2017, and for the core program would be, summits would be due for, by Friday, April 7th. I wanted to put that on the next agenda just to begin that discussion. I spoke with Mr. Healy. He is not going to be coming forward with any recommendations for the accelerated repair program. We were successful last year in the accelerated repair program, and we're moving forward with the new high school roof. That will be starting this summer, and, but yes, a number of items for the core program, some that we're very familiar with and others. So I just wanted to put that on the next agenda just to begin that discussion, and certainly any input, please bring that forward. The second item that I wanted to, I'm likely going to put on the next agenda, but I wanted to bring everybody up to speed. I have a further conversation with Superintendent Lupini of the Essex School, giving us updates as to where we stand with applications and budgets. And I wanted to mark that up for the next meeting, likely the next meeting, or the following reading, and just wanted to provide updates. He has a number of, a schedule for us in terms of the budget, but also he can give us some numbers as to school enrollment for us, the upcoming, the next school year. So I wanted to provide that to the committee as well. Mr. Huck?
Will Mr. Healy be present for the SLR conversation?
If we would like him to be, yes.
Please.
Okay. Just wanted to give that quick update. Anything else before we adjourn?
Motion, Mr. Mayor?
Seconded.